The town of East Fishkill Planning Board meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Craig Smith.
John Hutskow.
Russ Schmidt.
He's not here. John Cutler's here.
And Michael O'Brien. Would you please join me in stating the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item. The upcoming meetings. We have a meeting scheduled for March 4th and March 18th. So, right now, we don't foresee any changes to that, or we're good?
It's still on.
Okay. And approval of the meeting minutes. October 1st. Jason, John Cutler.
Yeah.
John Hutskow and Craig. We're all here. Have you folks had a chance to review?
Yeah, I have.
Yes.
Any, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Meeting for October 1st is approved. Meeting minutes.
Michael make a motion.
Oh, I make a motion.
You gotta make a motion.
Thank you. I knew I didn't have the verbiage right. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 1st as is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting carries. November 19th. Jason, Russ, John Cutler, John Hutskow, Craig and Bob were here. Does anyone have a chance to review them?
Yes. No, no issues.
I make a motion that we approve those.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Jesus Christ. This is gonna be a tough one today. I can see this already.
Motion carries. When I look like this, I'm waiting for a...
I wasn't looking at you there.
I know. Okay.
Got it.
Okay. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, Stewart Shop, minor modification for addition, Route 82 on Lake Walton Road.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Marshall from Stewart Shops. I apologize, this is only the second time I've appeared before your board, and I forgot my PDF. You'll be happy that this is the easier of my applications before your board. We're proposing an 800 square foot addition off what ends up being the west side of the store. The store is roughly 2,400 square feet now. When you put the entrance on the corner as it is, you lose a little bit of the square footage. The new stores that we're building are between 3,300 and 3,400 square feet. What this will do is this will allow us to expand the aisle width inside, possibly expand cooler space, and more than likely add a second customer access bathroom. We have completed a project similar to this in Saratoga County. I'm just gonna pass around some of the pictures. In appearing before the Architecture Review Board, which I did again for the first time, well, first of all, I learned something. When blocks are put together, it's called interdigitated. So, we will be interdigitating the block...
You have a word for the use it three times, and you'll have it for...
I would hope to not present long enough to use it three times. But we will interdigitate the blocks to eliminate that seam appearance. The western elevation is really the one, I think, of most concern, because that's the one that borders neighboring property. There is a fence there now and a relatively large tree buffer. We are under the impression the neighbor's aware of the work we plan on doing, and we have done some work for her in an effort to be good neighbors. We will, as part of the Architecture Review Board's desire, we will shield the freezer addition from 82, because the freezer, the exterior freezer is, as you'll see in those pictures, a yellow metal. They don't make brick-looking boxes. So, with that, we'll make the changes at the Architecture Review Board. I'll just walk you through them right now. They would rather, instead of the phi-pond we proposed, they would rather have a canopy that has the mansard roof, much like our shop in Fishkill Plains. We will extend the mansard approximately halfway between the two bard units on the rear of the building, near the dentist. On a side note, we did approach the dentist for an interconnect, thinking that that was a good planning tool to prevent people from going out onto Lake Walton Road, and they did not wish to pursue that. This will be pro-panel metal overhang. The Architecture Review Board wishes that we either enclose the beams or can or lever them, and we will attempt to can or lever them. The elevation from Lake Walton Road doesn't change, and then on the Route 82 side, we will center the sign.
Okay. Great. Let me start with just a few questions. Again, the ARB approval is the key before we can decide whether this is a minor modification or requires the full review. There was, I understand there was a drainage issue on this one?
Not so much a drainage issue, but just the plans themselves are a little bit unclear with the existing conditions. And in our letter, we did ask that they identify all the pipe invert sizes, give us a better idea of which direction water's flowing around the property. There's a swell in the area near where the addition goes, and it seems like it's going to encroach basically on top of that swell. And there's also a roof leader shown coming out in a direction, but it's just not clear as far as elevations and how it's gonna, how the water's gonna flow from the addition into the existing drainage that they have on site.
Okay.
So, we're asking for clarification. It seems like it'll ultimately work. It's just getting some of those details, and details along the roadway with the existing driveways and pipe networks is what we're interested in.
Okay.
Well, I will comply, I mean, obviously, having not seen that letter, will comply.
Okay.
I think that overall, what ends up happening is there's a discharge basin over here. So, I'm assuming that most things lead to that basin, but I will prove it.
I thought it ran kinda right behind the building as well, or I thought it extended.
There's a...
Flared end section over here for the roof drains. I'm assuming that that has to go this way. I don't know what happens back here. That's not shown on the level of plans I have with me.
Okay. It's to be addressed. Noise. There was the issue about the compressor for the freezer, and whether or not that would be audible to the neighbors.
I would imagine with the buffer that's between us and the neighbor, that would not be audible. I guess I can find out the, you know, the decibel reading and then do a comparison. I would imagine that the speed of traffic flowing on Route 82 is louder to the neighbor than our compressor kicking on and off.
Okay. If we, yeah, if we could get the decimal to...
You, on that note, check. I know generators have quiet-run engines. Whether or not those compressors can be featured similar, quiet-run? Because while you may have traffic during the day, I would think 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, if your compressor's cycling, there's not that much traffic on the road.
Then there was the issue about the, where we're gonna have to relocate the refuse container.
It's not shown in color, which is one of the items that the Architecture Review Board has requested, but from right here, that's the existing location. We're essentially moving it backwards 20 feet.
Okay. So, that is, okay.
And that enclosure will remain. Nothing changes really, except that it moves back 20 feet to the west.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my points. I mean, I don't really see this as a biggie, but let me just poll the board. Questions or comments from the board members?
Is the noise issue...
Yeah.
Okay.
We should have something from the neighbor.
Jason, John.
They know what's going on, you know? We should have something from the neighbor.
Okay.
They know what's going on.
And you've said you're working with the neighbors, so that's...
We did some tree work for her over the summer, I think in anticipation of us doing this project.
Okay.
So, I didn't personally make contact with her, but I will before the next meeting.
Just so we know that she's, they're aware of what's going on.
At least I'll have one neighbor that likes me.
Professionals' comments.
How much of these new 800 square feet would be Ash's store space, like, used by customers?
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna have a, I don't have a floor plan in front of me to give an exact answer on that, but the, my sense of it is it's gonna be very little. The reason is that the delivery door is back here, and when the delivery door is placed like that, the, you certainly walk into the cooler and freezer. So, that way, whether, you know, you're delivering milk, you go right to the cooler, frozen goods to the freezer. So, I think it just allows everything to be pushed back. I would imagine that actually most of that square footed is cooler space.
Okay. Can we just confirm that?
Yeah, I got a floor...
Do you need to just understand it as far as the parking calculation is concerned?
Okay, so you need a calculation based on retail space?
Yeah. Just because that's what we have to make sure we're dealing with. And then, my other comment is, I, the refuse location is, is it 20 feet closer to the neighboring property now? And then, so I was just, I was just looking at the circulation in general, and I'm assuming now that trucks, where do they currently deliver?
Just up the, I mean, it's in the same location, but just to the east.
Okay. So, I guess my only thought was just that, because the trucks will be going a little bit closer to the neighboring property line, and the refuse will be, being emptied a little bit closer to the property line, I just wanted to make you aware that that...
Okay.
And then, the other question I had is, is there any landscaping that's being added, or is there any, I know that you said you're doing something with the signage, but is there any landscaping?
We can provide a detail. I think that the, the only landscaping we would look to include is a long 82 to shield the freezer addition.
Is there any additional lighting behind there?
When we do, the entire project will upgrade both the canopy and soffit to LED lighting.
Would it, will it be LED lights?
Yes.
Okay. Can you, do you have a...
Topometry?
Yeah. Can you provide that?
Joe. I'm sorry, Michelle, was that it, or...
That was it for me, yes.
Okay.
One other comment that we had, there was a mention of some underground storage tank replacement, and we were just asking for some further details. Is that, is that gonna require shutting down the store? Are you gonna be trying to remaining open certain things while that's being done, or...
Yeah, we don't shut the store down.
Okay.
We can provide details as to what size tanks.
I think you did have some related tank details.
What, what kind of tanks are these? I'm sorry, I missed that.
They're for the gas, the gas tank replacement. The likelihood is, in this location, we're using double-wall steel tanks, and as a company, we've taken a stance on going ahead of the curve to double-wall fiberglass tanks. The benefit of the double, the double-wall fiberglass, and we actually just had this occur in one of our stores, is that in between the two walls, there's a brine solution. And when, should a petroleum product enter the brine solution, the salinity is affected and the alarm goes off. So, we're ahead of DEC when it comes to compliance, and it's likely to be, as right now it says 15,000, 2, 115,000 and 1,6000 gallon tank.
Okay. So, that's part of that is, and, but as I recall, those tanks are in the front and up off to the side, right? So, you're, you're gonna have that unearthed at the same time as doing the other work?
Yeah, the canopy work will probably occur simultaneously to the gas tanks. The work around the store, and I think our contractors, we have a very limited number of contractors that we work with, and that's because they've learned to dance together well, but we wouldn't do anything that would jeopardize the operation of the store.
No, I applaud you guys for going that way. Joe?
I guess we, we just ask if you are cordoning off the tanks, try to show that in some way so we know how you're separating customer traffic from construction vehicles and any kind of hazards that may be going on with the replacement of tanks.
So, with that, you're gonna show a staging area? Is that a...
Right. Yeah, staging area, like a fenced-in portion, or whatever your arrangement is with the contractor.
So, will you have to stockpile soil on-site as part of the replacement of the tanks, or...
I would imagine that, yes, we would.
So, if you can identify that area as well, because they're gonna start eating up quite a bit of space.
If I had to guess, that we would, I'm not gonna guess.
Plan it out.
Okay. Joe, anything else?
That's, I mean, that's why we asked that question, is so they think, and show these things, so the town's aware what's going on, and if there are questions that come up or something that could be avoided by planning it out first, we'd like to have them try to do that.
Those tanks are not leaking now, right? This is purely a proactive step?
No, yeah, we're, no, this is, no, everything...
Pure proactive step?
This is a, again, in 2016, DEC has a regulation, and 2016, everyone has to have double-wall tanks of some variety. Stewart's is self-insured, so we've taken a stance that we're gonna go above and beyond DEC's regulation and go to double-wall fiberglass, because that's above industry, you know, better than industry standard.
Okay.
If there is, which in, in the nature of doing our business, we do encounter contamination when we excavate. We comply with DEC regulations as far as spill notification and mitigation.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you'll be doing monitoring during the excavation, I take it, and sampling?
Yeah, we, we have two geologists on staff that plan the dirt.
Brendan, any comments?
The only comment I would add is that, I mean, it is a 25% expansion of the building. I don't, I don't know when the original development was approved or what kind of traffic study was done for it, but I don't know if there's any expectation of additional traffic generation from the expansion of the store.
I would not anticipate, going to Michelle's question, I think that this is more of a delivery stand, you know, delivery improvement for the people that work in the store, and I don't see the retail space increasing substantially.
Okay.
However, I hope to have a theoretical floor plan that will prove that by the next time I appear.
Okay. Is it the same as these pictures here?
Roughly the same as those pictures there.
Do you know how much retail space was added here?
No. I could fi, I mean, again, it's, I can, I can find that out by the next, you know, time I come back, but, again, it's, it's back room connection to the cooler, and then expanded aisle width. We're not gonna, you know, we're not getting, I don't know, I don't have a good example. Our business is pretty much staying the same. We just find that opening up the stores has led to, it's a busy store, and by just opening up inside, it gives it a little bit of, people a little bit of room to circulate internally.
Okay. Will they have access from inside the store into that cooler, or is it just...
Yes, they'll have access inside the store into the cooler and freezer, but not, so you, you'll come in the delivery door, and then when you get inside the delivery door, you'll have the ability to choose freezer, cooler, store. But the freezer has no exterior doors.
I was gonna say, that's for employees only, right?
Correct. This is also often tied into the back room and the storage space, which, again, I go back to why I'm, you know, I don't believe that there's an increase, significant increase in retail space.
Well, way out. Scott, any questions or comments?
No.
Tom? Any leaning in terms of minor modification versus...
Well, I mean, I think we have this, I originally thought I was leaning towards minor, but with this site gonna be in such a state, you know, I don't know if the neighbors should at least be given the opportunity to hear about it prior. That would be my only, and the change in, you know...
And the tanks.
And the tank change out and whatnot, so it's, it's gonna be a big project, not just a little.
If we can read for that one neighbor, I think, you know, versus throwing it open, I mean, the neighbor, that one neighbor is kinda the key that I've heard, so...
So, what I can do is I can send Mr. and Mrs. Murray a letter, and I'll copy the Planning Board, and then see if I get a response, or direct them to contact you.
Well, you can contact the Planning Board, and then we'll at least have information as to what type of building it's on.
The only thing I'd like to add, though, I think once these tanks come out, and there's excavation and there's soil, stockpile, people in that immediate vicinity, I think, are gonna have concerns that, was there a leak prompted this? And if there's no public hearing, that at least we put it all out there ahead of it occurring.
Yeah, I would assume that you folks would have a sign posted to the effect that, you know, that this is a proactive step and not, right? I mean, no.
I mean, for, I, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately or fortunately for us, it's just another, we do 20 of these a year, so...
You don't have any policy of just telling people, "Look, there was no leak here," and...
No, I mean, it's, our, our business is, you know, fairly heavily regulated by the Department of Environmental Conservation, so we're, we believe that we follow their procedures, and their procedures don't require it.
Okay.
I would, my, my, here's my concern. My concern is I put up a sign that says, "No spill," or, you know, "No gas in the ground," or something like that, and then, just thinking out loud, I make another appearance, and that sign is then used as, they have to advertise no spill.
Okay. Okay.
So, I guess once we see the plans, we can come back and you make the findings.
Okay, so there's a number of points here. Any other comments from the board members? Yeah, but I think it's a good proposal, and so, just keep working it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up. Taylor Ray. I don't think I've heard this many people be quiet for this long. You know, Mike, next time, just because of that, if you wouldn't mind, could you bring somebody to just do stand-up while you're screwing around with the computer?
Yep.
Okay. Nope. We got him. We got him last time. Is it the same ones? No changes from the last set that was distributed last week?
Yeah, no, no, this is, yeah, this is supposed to be, I don't know, weather or something along the line, so this should be, we're lucky with what we've got.
This site is over at the, at the intersection of the Teconic State Parkway and Route 82. Probably who's more familiar with the location is, is Florrie's gas station. Actually, Florrie's is not on the site. This is the site to the left of it, south, and to the rear of it. The building in the front is currently fully occupied. Duchess Orthopedics, I believe, is the tenant, and then the rear building, 9,000 square foot building, is partially filled. Let's call it 60%. We had went through and received approval for the site a number of years ago. Building was constructed. It's actually sat vacant for quite some time, and then the back building started filling with tenants, and effectively, what's back there right now are dentists, okay? And they range from children's dentistry all the way to adult, okay? One of the things that the, the, just think, the tenant noticed that during, during, let's say, heavy usage at the site, parking is, is pretty heavy out there, okay? And you probably don't see much of it, because it's so far off the frontage of 82, it's, you know, it's a big building, but it's actually kinda hidden the way it's situated. The original site, we looked at both, providing for professional office as well as medical, and then we ran the calculations for both, and then the one that was higher is what we provided for. So, the site right now provides for a total of 52 parking spaces, okay? When he's at peak, he's got about 10 spots that are left, okay? So, the reason we're here, it's not because the town, you know, came over with a whip and said, "We've got a problem," but this, the applicant is, is looking at it as a potential issue related to parking when he fills in the balance of the, of the two tenants, tenancies. That being said, there's really taking all considerations, the location of Teconic, and requiring a 100-foot offset with construction off the Teconic, and a number of other things, there's a very small spot, open in the north, in the northeast corner, whereabouts we've provided, or we've kinda reconfigured some existing parking spaces to provide for some additional parking spaces. And the long and short of it is, right now, as I mentioned to you, there's, there's 52 spots. By reconfiguring and providing for a very small additional area up in that corner, we provide, I think it's 14 ultimately in that, but we're losing, we're losing five. So, the net effect is, this whole iteration here is, is for another nine spots.
So, where employees are mostly gonna go?
What's that?
Employees go to park there?
Well, that, that would be the thought, because they're, they're kinda...
It's pretty far.
They're more remote, yeah. And one of the things, too, is, is I understand that, for whatever reason, and, you know, maybe, maybe in the next discussion with this, is the, the employee count for, for the, for these medical are actually pretty intensive. It's not like it's one of these things where it's the dentist office and there's two employees. I mean, they're, they're pretty heavily intensive employee-wise, so, you know, if, if you're talking about a peak period right now where you have only 10 spots left, you have 40% of the building not occupied. While nine spaces net doesn't seem like a lot, you know what? In the whole scheme of things, it certainly was worth for Mr. Florrie to say, "You know what? Let's, let's take a look and see if we can do this." So, a couple of issues as it relates to constructing in this corner, you have, we have a floodplain. It's part of the water, the water cow runs down through there. And as part of actually the covered bridge subdivision, there was a large hydrological study that was done through there to determine the floodplain elevation and so forth, and they actually sized the opening for the bridge that serves covered bridge, and worked its way along that whole corridor back in terms of the floodplain location. Well, you know, as you know, a year and a half, a change ago, they came out with new studies, which are a bit more conservative. So, what we're doing right now, probably gets into some of the engineering aspects of it, is, is we're verifying with the surveyor of record that, in fact, his datum system is the same as the datum system that was, that was used for the purposes of establishing the latest and greatest. We're pretty confident that we're not within the floodway portion of the floodplain, but it's, it's likely that we, we may be in the floodplain itself, which would then push to a floodplain development permit, which leads to another discussion. The other point here is, there is a, we do kinda, we get, we're kinda tucked away in there, next, next to the residential zone law, and while there's not an immediate home in that area, you'll see on the top portion of the map, that's the closest home that exists next to this property. You know, it gets a little more sensitive in there, because we're getting closer to the residential portion of the, of the, of the line. So, we do provide for some landscaping. I know the CAC had some concerns in terms of what we were proposing. We could certainly work to try and minimize any potential impact related to, do you do any residential property, but, you know, the long and short of it, that is, that is the... property, but, you know, the long and short of it, that is, that is the crux of the application. You know, we're looking now. Depending on how this floodplain issue works out, where we end up and so forth, one of the things that certainly could be entertained, depending on the board and so forth, is possibly just going with, you know, a gravel-type surface. You know, everything out there is paved now. It's a professional office park. You know, it's meant to be that way, but if there was some thought and theory about possibly going in that direction, certainly entertain, but.
Pavers out there instead of, like, pavers instead of?
Permeable pavers, things like that. I mean, right. The problem is, is we're, if we are within this 100-year floodplain, it makes it tough to design advantage around, you know, 100-year storms.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Which we seem to have increasing frequency, but.
We can, we can try.
Okay, so, I mean, this one again, this was originally zoned as, or proposed as a mixture of office and medical, and now it's all medical, so.
It's 60 percent medical, yeah.
What, what is the, our professionals' viewpoint of what is the number of parking slots there should be?
Well, between when this was approved and now, we changed the medical requirements for parking.
Right.
It's now as much more, it requires one space for every 150. That's inclusive of employees, so there's no, you don't add on the employees. It's just one for everyone, so that's based on surveys that were done at the medical group. But.
Yeah, well, I only brought it the way it was originally.
No, I understand, and that is fine, you can help understand the history of the site. My question is.
150, 150 per?
It's one for everyone, 50 now, so it's pretty easy. Is, are you, are we assuming, and I'm guessing you are, that the remainder of the space, the extra 40 percent or whatever it is, is not occupied? Is likely going to be some sort of medical dental use?
Well, it's, there's certainly that potential, you know, so.
So you'd like, you'd like to assume that that's what's going to happen in your worst-case scenario?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. I mean, 9,000 square foot divided by 150. Do it again. Screw it up. Yeah, put you 75.
Okay, so that's, that's one question. And my other question is just about the creek. We do probably need to go out there, make sure there's no regulated let-ones out there because of the creek. And also, do you have any idea for the classification of the, the declassification? Is it Class C or CT?
I believe it's C.
Okay, because that may, you would be needing some sort of permitting from BEC. And also, I noticed that there was a covert that would need to be replaced. Is that true?
There, you know, you know, part of it, too, and I think a part of Joe's letter. This, this plan was prepared based upon what was to be proposed. As part of this, actually, this covert was replaced. There was a BEC permit, so there may have been a stray note on there related to that.
Okay, so there was a BEC permit for that covert?
There was.
So I'm guessing that you might have some permit. If you had to get a BEC permit, probably from the original grid, you may, you'd be getting some sort of BEC involvement.
Well, what we'll do is, we can certainly consult with them, because as part of this, we had a show of forever green area along the edge of the creek. We consulted with BEC as part of the original approval and asked, you know, in terms of meeting any other permits related to it. And the answer then, at the time, was, other than what we were doing for the covert replacement, the answer is no. I think, I think we can certainly ask the question and make sure whether to rip it off or not. I don't believe there is, but we can certainly ask the question.
Okay, so, let me, let me return to the first point if I could, Michelle.
Sure.
The number you came up with was 75. With the adders, what, what number would you be at with the adders?
Right now, we're at 52. When you add, you're at 61.
61, okay.
Net, yeah. You're taking away four and nine.
So, okay, so we're still short, like, 14?
No, you're not, no, you're not. You're not short.
That's 60.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
He did the math.
9,000 divided by 150 is 60.
Okay.
It's 60?
It's 60, yeah.
Oh, we're good.
Good stuff, okay.
Yeah, we were looking at that.
Do I got to check it again? Hey, that one will work for me, so let's stop there.
Got it? Okay, so we're good on that one, okay?
It's nine, nine, right.
All right, so we can go on to the next point, okay? I wanted to know whether that, which side that one fell. Okay, I'm sorry, Michelle, were you going to make another?
Are, I'm just trying to figure out, it's 60, but that includes also the spaces for the 4,800 square foot building. True?
No.
So it's 61 just for the back building?
52 existing.
Right.
52 existing. We're adding 14.
But I'm not, Jason, I'm just trying to understand.
No, she's asking.
She's asking.
Does that include all the parking?
All the parking.
For a building, too?
We broke out the parking from the front to the back, so that, and I was just literally counting them up before we stepped up here.
How's the front sitting? I mean, site-wide, how's the number sitting?
Well. Four, four, that just left the creek.
And how many, by code, is that required to have?
4,800 square feet. I'll let Jason run a number.
One moment, please.
32. All right, so we need 32. We have to go back to 22 in the front, so we're 10 short.
Right.
And then it looks like we're about even in the back.
Okay, but you have an easement with the mobile station.
Yeah, there's, as part of this, that little cutout in the front, there was a land swap between this property and the mobile station.
Right.
So there was a parking lot that was installed up in the front there, and yes, there is common ownership there, so there's swapping of spots, too. I know that mobile tends to use that lot for their employees because they're the most.
So overall, the site is tight on parking?
Yeah. That's why we're here.
Well, it's not just the one building, Mike. It's the whole site. Okay, that's fine, that's, I'm with you, but it's, it's also, site-wide, if you look at it, it's closer to the expected total, right, so.
Yeah, if you look at the entirety of the site, I would say we're a little light, we're 10 light the front and even in the back, so we're a little light. This would help get us closer to current conformance.
Okay, right. This is, it's tending to get closer to conformance. Duly noted. Any, any other?
Those are my main, my main comments, and of course, shielding of whatever goes in there if the parking does go in there for the neighborhood.
Okay. Joe, comments?
There's a few Mike already touched on as far as floodplain and drainage. I've already had some discussion with his office on, and he mentioned about checking the datum, looking at the prior studies, trying to find out how the contours from the current mapping overlay with the actual topo. And that seems like it's maybe going to trigger them into a floodplain development permit once we get some more information on the background of those prior studies. I think he also mentioned there had been a no-construction easement in this area near, where they're proposing some work, and they may need to modify that in some, some way to offset anything they may be encroaching on with this plan. They might have to offset elsewhere.
Just for the, there is construction, which represented on the existing additions plan by this line, and what we're literally doing is starting a parking lot at that line a little back. In theory, yes, you couldn't construct a parking lot without sneaking into that area to work. We don't plan on filling or anything like that, but, you know, I, I think something we could probably work to.
Some of our other comments that I think Mike touched on as well is the, there was some confusion about different notes and what was proposed under the original plan versus what they're proposing now, and just cleaning that up a little bit and showing the actual existing conditions, you know, where the pipes are running, where there's structures, and how that existing drainage system works, and how the new parking would affect, potentially affect the drainage system that's there today. So I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. Brendan?
Just a couple of things. One relating to just access to a couple of these new parking spaces is a little difficult, like, space 14, and maybe the end of the lot ought to have a bump out similar to what's in the existing lot in order to allow a little backing to maneuver out of there. Also, I would comment on just snow storage, and it's a good year to comment on that, right? Where you have the landscaping right up against the edge of the parking lot, you know, I think that would be really the only area you're going to be able to push snow in that new expanded area. So it's just something to consider with how you lay out the landscaping. You know, I would say Site 4 also has some access, but I think you can get in there. It's just going to take you a couple of turns to get in, but especially if it's used for employees, you know, I think it would be reasonable.
Got to look at that? You don't, not, okay. Anything else? Scott?
Yep.
Tom? Board members? I think you're trying to improve the slate, so, you know, you have some, some points to address here and?
Yeah, let's get through, I think, probably the single biggest issue is the floodplain one. Let's see if we can kind of work through that. Everything else seems manageable, but without that, the kind of changes that is going to solve.
Okay. Okay, anything else, or?
That's it.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's good, and, you know.
It's moving right along.
If you want to thank Jason again, you can. Okay, next up. Sarlo amended site plan. It's another quiet period, Mike, where some entertainment would have been appreciated.
Town, town, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Would be nice.
Okay. Sarlo. We submitted under a conceptual proposal a couple months ago. Well, month and a half ago. And in general, it's kind of, kind of, seems really normal for that. We come in with a certain amount of vehicles shown. Effectively, this application includes, or is proposed to allow for the sale of used cars on a pre-existing site. The site right now has an existing residential component regarding the apartment that exists out there. There's an existing garage, shed, kind of a closet hut that exists in the back. The site was previously approved for auto detailing, okay? Effectively, it's had someone come in, detail their car, maybe detailing, I mean, washing the outside, scrubbing the inside, that kind of thing, okay? In addition to a nail salon. At the end of the day, nail salon didn't particularly work out, and the detailing shop, it wasn't particularly profitable either, so there's where we're at. So other than the residential use, the site has been effectively dormant for, you know, for a small period of time. Thus, Rick Sarlo, who happened to be with me tonight behind me, said, "Listen, what's the potential of possibly getting some used cars on the site to sell?" So we sat, we had shown a proposal for, I think it was at the time, 12 cars. Took a look at it, came back after consideration of that meeting and trying to, let's call it maximize the potential of the site. We added a few more cars, 22, 23 was the total. The long and short of it is, is we kind of had heard that there was some concern related to the number of vehicles in terms of being sold. It is, it is not a huge site. It's a fairly tight site. We want to maintain other existing uses on the site. So the current plan that you have in front of you is reflective of what the applicant would like to propose at this time, okay? Which is related to the display vehicles, and let's call them the used cars. We're proposing at this time a total of 15, okay? It's not 12, if it's not 23 or 23. We felt it seemed like a reasonable number, which allowed for the intended use of the site and still allowed for proper traffic circulation and things along those lines. You know, we, the parcel isn't within a B1 zone. One of the things that was requested at the previous kind of sit-down discussion was to ensure that no display vehicles were going to be within the setback, okay? And it really, the focus of the meeting at the time was the front yard setback. I guess it's been a policy, or is now the policy of the town related to displays, whether it be for this or whatever other business, not to have those, or try to prevent those within the front yard. I guess, I think the theory behind that would probably be to try and maintain greenery and strip and not have everything thrown around the road, which is certainly understood. So we did some configuration, moved some of the cars back, removed some cars from the front, so the heavy solid line in the front is your front yard setback, which is 40 feet from the edge of the property line. Now, in January of last year, when the new zoning came through with the B1 zone, they, it used to be a zero side yard setback for buildings in the B1 zone. I show on this, on the northern, well, on the southern end, actually, the, the offset line running up the right-hand side as being 10 feet. I did, there was a little bit of confusion related to the offsets, side yard offsets, setbacks for building. Because if you look at the table online, and it's part of the code, it indicates that you need 10 feet for a side yard for one yard, and then you need 10 feet for a side yard for both yards. And my experience with those with other towns and so forth over the years has been that, you know, you can choose which side is your 10 feet, and any other one ends up being zero. So I understand that that may not be the case, it's just maybe you screw up the table. So while we were all focusing at the meeting on keeping the cars out of the front yard offset, what we kind of understand now is that there is the thought to try and keep the cars out of the side yard setback as well, which you'll see on this, when we were under the other, the other thought related to just 10 yard on one side, I did shift at least the display cars out of the side yard setback. Notice parking there. But the other side, I left zero. So there will certainly be a pretty big impact if we have to subscribe to that 10-foot side yard on the other side of the building. That's something that's got to, you know, we've got to discuss. You know, other than that, I mean, it's, 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 there's a lot going on on the site. Mr. Sarlo wants to maintain his ability to detail cars, doesn't want to lose the ability to do that. He's shown not only parking for display, but also parking for the apartment and the parking for the other business as well on this.
It sounds like this use would be a little more environmentally friendly, but let's, let's go back to the 10-foot. I mean, that is the rule, right? I mean, it's 10 feet on both sides, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, when you say talk about it, I mean.
Well, I guess I want a clarification. That's, that's, that's really what it is. Because I see that the zoning changed, and that's, that's fine. You know, part of the thing with regards to the offset, or when I look at setback, it's a structure. But I guess there's been policy relative to other applications potentially for the board where it's been listed, we really don't want to have displays within those yard areas. So if that, in fact, is the case, then we're going to have to relook at, you know, the left-hand side, with those three spots on the left-hand side, the red box. And certainly, these display vehicles over here, we can shift a little further into the site.
Or go after a variance?
Well, I mean, I guess that's worthy of some discussion, too, because the reality is if we wanted, we need the display vehicles in the front. That's how you sell cars, so people see them. If we decided to take the display vehicles and put them in the back and leave the front as regular parking, apparently that would be okay, because they're not display cars. And we'd be parking still right up against the property line like usual, so, you know, what, I understand the reason for the thought to try and maintain separation of green spaces and things like that, but this situation is certainly a little bit different because basically paving goes within two feet of the property line.
I can't picture the site. What's on, what's next to it there?
I think right now it's actually a veterinarian. It used to be, it's a medical years ago, right?
Yeah, veterinarian on one side and then woods on the other side.
Veterinarian on one side, and then woods on the other side.
Woods on the north.
Right. I remember seeing these. Okay. Right. So, you're talking about going closer on the woods?
Uh, yes. The way we show this is those vehicles are within 10-foot setback on the wood side, which I believe right now is effectively a vacant piece.
So, in addition to...
I believe.
Tom? That 10-foot, is that for a structure? I mean, these are...
Well, yeah, but the town board amended it, and now there's different rules. The intent of the town board is that setback be a setback for everything, nothing on the site, especially except landscaping, I believe. And that's, remember, we went through that last year when you were talking about the zoning amendments, so. What was, you know, if you might have a 10-foot setback if you're gonna allow things in it, you know, so it came up. I believe it's just landscaping.
I mean, there was, there was an allowance for driveways, it's obviously driveways walking through the front mailbox and things like that, but whether or not...
But what about the existing garage? It's already...
Well, this site is a little unique, because it's somewhat pre-existing, non-conforming mixed in there. They may benefit by a trip to the zoning board about it, because that might interpret what was there, how was there, and things like that.
That garage right there? That's the setback right there.
Yeah, that garage is 3.1, I think it says 3.4 feet of the side yard.
Yeah, that's right there. This is all, all wood.
Again, understanding the reason for the reg, this is, and this was subject to a previous site plan, there's no violation, so there is some history here relative to this being approved in the past.
Scott, any issues that you see with this?
Well, one thing as far as the use of the structure. I know Michelle, and Michelle's comment if you want to...
Yeah, sure. Well, I just, you're allowed to have an apartment, but there's some pretty strict requirements related to the residential use of the property on the site, and I cited the section of the code 124, I think, 87, I believe. So, just confirming that that, those requirements can be met with the apartment. And is the, I guess, Mike, also, is the sales, I'm trying to understand, the 990 square feet, is that in the entire structure?
No, because if you look at their floor plan here, showing apartment, that far exceeds 50 percent.
So, is it, okay, so this is 990, and that's 990 as well on the other side? What's the total, is the total square footage of the...
Typically, that would be the footprint. So, if you're, you know, there is a little small upstairs, so, you know, we would have to add that in. But, the long and short of it is, is as it relates to that provision, doesn't meet. You know, in terms of the percentage of the building that's dedicated to, you know, 50, I think more than 50 percent residential component, doesn't exist, doesn't meet today, never has.
Do you know what the total square footage is?
I don't.
You can get it for me.
I don't. If, let's just say if the footprint was 990, and just looking at the footprint, you know, upstairs is probably a third of that, so another 330, so you're probably talking about 1,200 square feet total, just bottom and top.
And that doesn't include the front porch, which is where the office space is, right?
That, right. Well, the enclosed front porch would be part of that category.
It is, right.
So, if you're talking 1,200, I would venture to say that the residential component portion of this, looking at what we have now, is probably 80 percent.
I think something has changed inside the building, that the apartment has grown from what was previously approved, and I think we just got to get our arms around that. But, the room that has the handicap bathroom and a bedroom was part of an office space previously, and now it looks like it's part of an apartment, and the office has shrunk. So...
You're talking like the bedroom in the front?
Yes, the bedroom in the front and the handicap bathroom in the front. At some point, that was part of an office, part of an office retail use. Now, it looks like it's grown into either a separate residence or part of an existing residence.
Yeah, I know there's been some talk and discussion regarding, there's three meters on the building. One goes to the front business.
One is for the business in front, one is for the apartment, and one is for the garage in back.
Just so that's on the record and clear. Let's say that that bedroom turned into an office, and we're back to what we were. And I know there's actually some information that Rick may want to provide.
The, check it out here. Okay. This, this, and this was the salon. This would be far.
Right.
Because I'm just using this and the bathroom for the office, I want to put this back with this, the bedroom.
So, that's, you know, that's further exacerbating the 50 percent limitation by doing that. And then how do you gain access from the office to that handicap bathroom without going through that bedroom?
Well, it's really not, it's, it's, it's a little difficult. It's not, you go from here, through to here, right to the bathroom.
Through the bedroom?
No, it's a wall here.
So, the plans are not accurate of what's out there?
This one here is not, no.
You're saying there's a little alcove there?
You got it.
And then there's a door that goes in here, and another door here?
Well, you know, we gotta get that cleaned up as part of this.
This, this door, this door is not there.
Scott, when you say cleaned up, are you talking about...
Well, he's showing walls that are not shown on the plan, so I think for us to fully understand what's going on here, we gotta have a plan that reflects what's out there.
Okay, you're talking about cleaning up the plan, not cleaning up...
Yeah, yeah, clean.
When you say, right. Okay. I just, when you say get that cleaned up, I'm clarifying what that is.
This, the whole front?
Yeah, it's not gas tanks.
Right, but we're still, that's what, what's on our record is those, both of those rooms were part of your office, or part of that nail salon.
That one fine leaves too, or...
Right, so by increasing, by using those as part of your apartment, you're increasing the size of your apartment that already doesn't meet codes. In other words, you're expanding a non-conforming use.
That's not, and this is all.
And then, and then, and at that point, we're left with what's, whatever's going on upstairs.
Yeah, that's all, that's just the full top.
Yeah, because the bottom line is you're changing use now to a car dealer, and the code says 50 percent, so, you know. If you want to leave it as a nail salon, that's whatever you were previously approved for. If you're gonna make the car dealer, then the code says 50 percent is the maximum size for your residence.
Okay.
So, then we can find the way it was.
It's 50 percent of whatever your square footage is, if you're gonna change it to a car use, a car dealer.
That, yeah, let's, if that, Rick, just to be clear, that building gets converted back to office, let's per se. This still is not going to meet that 50 percent requirement. So, effectively, what you're indicating is that in order to have a car, to maintain its apartment use...
I think our... If you don't want to go to the zoning board, then you have to bring the building up to the current code, which is the caretaker's apartment can't be more than 50 percent of the square footage of the building, right? So, if this was a pre-existing, non-conforming, and you had a larger place, and you want to go to the zoning board and clear up everything, they may agree with you and work it out. But if you don't, then I think you have to bring the square footage of the office up and the apartment down.
You may be going there anyway for your setbacks.
Yeah, well, that's, they have...
So, you clean up everything at that point?
So, I was gonna say, just polling board members here, and let me just ask, I mean, I'm sensing if you go to the zoning board and you get the variance for, for both the apartment and for the setbacks, I think we can see our way to make this a minor modification and move it up.
What Rick is pointing out is that that existing, that garage, that has, that has an existing variance from the zoning board.
Okay.
But again, that doesn't cover you related to having those cars within that setback, it's separate.
But I mean, if they were into that, they probably...
If you've already got one, then as long as those two conditions, I mean, let me just poll, I mean, do you think, those are the issues, right? So, you get those two issues resolved, and this is a minor modification. I mean, again, I commend you, because you're trying to put this back to work. You're trying to put the site back to work, so... So, you know, a little help here. You're good with that?
Okay. So, we can, I guess, in terms of a formal request...
Let me talk to my attorney. What do we do here? Do we make a motion here, or...
No.
No.
If you want to go to the zoning board, it would be to determine the non-conformity of the site and to request whatever...
Variance we're looking for.
Side yard setback variance if you want.
But I would like to make it clear that those are the issues we find, and if we come back, it's not gonna be...
And I think the sentiment of this board is, is that the conversion of it, since there's no additional pavement, things like that, that you're okay with it as a minor modification. So then, a final plan showing whatever the ZBA agrees to comes back to them by resolution and approves it.
I just, that's the reason I ask, is to duel boards and lead agency, but it sounds like it doesn't have to get into that, because it's such a minor...
Well, the zoning board will take care of it.
And this time, instead of thanking Jason, you can thank John Huskell for giving us that visual, as quickly as... Okay. You good?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Stone Ridge. Now, as I understand it, last we left our heroes. Lori had asked to see, you know, proof that this, this couldn't, you know, absolutely required going out on Palin Road. And, and one of the things that was, I guess, she wanted to see drawings done both ways, and I understand that drawings have been resubmitted, and that Scott has... Scott, we're gonna lean heavily on you on this one, as always, and, so, okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Haven't seen you in a while, so hopefully we can, it's always good to see you, but perhaps we can move on with this. I think, first of all, my name's Richard O'Rourke, I'm with the law firm of Keenan Bean. We serve as counsel to the applicant. And here tonight, Richard Pearson, professional engineer with John Meyer Consulting, our traffic engineer. We also have Dennis Lynch, who is with Mark Day's office. Oh, there he is, okay. I was hoping he wasn't leaving, so... You may recall back in about 2006, this property fronting on Route 52 on the corner with Palin Road was rezoned to a B1A. And part of that application involved at the time, consideration in terms of having some limited access, we call it that, onto Palin Road, as well as the continued limited, shall we say, egress onto Route 52 from the road. At that time, there were, shall we say, correspondence that was received from the New York State Department of Transportation, as well as from the county insofar as what was being proposed by way of access for, for this property. There was a hiatus in the consideration of the application. We came back, question was raised. Some time has passed, we want the applicant to go back, resubmit your plans to the New York State Department of Transportation, as well as to the county, to make sure that nothing has changed and that the, the concepts that were put forth with the plan made sense, continue to make sense, and there had not been any dramatic change in terms of traffic volumes, et cetera. That, that project, or that attempt, was really to make sure that the plan as proposed could go forward, and that we were sort of betwixt and between, because the planning board chairman had said, "Well, we'd like to see some alternate plans," and the reason being, we want, we're not so sure that other plan works. Nevertheless, we went back, we corresponded with, with both DOT and the county. We got a letter back dated January 24th from DOT, which, which states that, that they saw the proposed access scheme as it relates to Route 22 along with Palin Road access, and it works well. We also concur with the conclusion that a single full movement access from Route 52, which was rejected by the department in 2006, would not serve well for vehicles turning left onto Route 52 from the driveway. So, DOT, in effect, took a look at it and said it makes sense. We then also went to the county, again, to reexamine what was being proposed in Palin Road area, and as a result of that, the county once again said, "It's fine. The only limitation is that there shall be all turning movements except the left turn from, from Palin Road into the site." The design calls for on Palin Road is merely two lanes, it's not a three-lane with different turning movements, that's not necessary. So, clearly, all of that works. That's the proposal that we've, we've put forth, that's the proposal we want to proceed with. It makes sense, the documentation has been handed up to the planning board, and that's where we are. All this correspondence was received, by the way, the latter part of January, so that's why we're here today.
So, you are, again, when this was first done, there was a conservation easement all along Palin Road, right? And that's...
There's an open, there was a designation, yes.
Was it any conservation easement or not?
I don't believe it was a conservation easement.
Non-disturbance.
Okay.
It was an area of non-disturbance, not a conservation easement, and there's a difference. And what we did, as, as you may recall, as part of the B1A rezoning, for the area of disturbance that is being proposed here, what we did was, because of that area of disturbance, what we provided was for the area of non-disturbance, in square footage terms, to be extended beyond the area that would be disturbed by the accessway. So, in other words, the net result of this is actually increase in a non-disturbance area by way of square footage. And so that, where the accessway is shown on Palin Road there, the property, shall we say, where's the north at? To the south, just want to confirm where it is, to the south, down to the intersection, all of that area was previously, not all a non-disturbance area, and now it's been continued down right to the intersection. So that it extends on Palin Road, right onto Route 52, so there's, there's been a net increase in the square footage of, of non-disturbance area.
As I understand it too, there was an issue regarding the fact that the, the road that is the, was the, that is going to be turned into a cul-de-sac, was never turned over to the town? Did I understand that?
Yeah, it's not a dedicated road, yes.
It's not a dedicated road. So, how would that be handled?
Well, they'll have to do the requisite legal documents to extinguish that or for dedication for that part of the road and merge this into one lot, that's what we're talking about.
That is correct.
Okay, so, I mean, this is really essentially the same drawing we saw back last...
Well, it is, but essentially with, with a reaffirmation, reconfirmation, if you will, that the board was looking for, does it, does it still work? We want, that's what we were asked to do, and the answer is yes, it does. And we, we addressed at length the issue in terms of, of, of the creation of the cul-de-sac. Many of the neighbors were very concerned, because it'd become a speedway pass-through for high school ki, for kids, and so, so, you know, we're trying to make an accommodation to satisfy everyone, and quite frankly, this works. The area that can be developed because of the sedimentation basins that are required and which have been built already, what we have as an area for, you know, actual disturbance is what we have. It's not, we're not, you know, we're not seeking any variances. It's a conforming application.
What about, there was an early proposal, I think one of the drawings asked for, since that's now going to be shut off, the Stone Ridge access was going to be shut off, moving the primary exit to the site down further to the west, and, you know, having that be the access. That, you know, again, I understand, you can't pull out there and expect to make a left turn on a regular basis. What did the state or the county say about those proposals?
I would, I don't know, I, I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but I also think I'd rather have an engineer answer that than me. So perhaps you can, Dennis.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch, the engineering. Right now, there's this, the existing road, there are several utilities that are, that are in that, that road. This pond that's here now, does, there's basically all the stormwater from this whole subdivision comes down and enters into this pond. To relocate this over to the, the west here, we would have to basically redo this entire existing pond that's there and, and rip up all the utilities coming down this road. Right now, we were, what we're proposing is to keep the majority of the utilities here and this, this pond that serves both this, this site here and the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the board members before we go through the professionals?
Well, is this a floodplain on, on this property further up? Is that, if I remember correctly, is in a floodplain?
There is, yes. Further up. Yeah. Oh, I don't think you were on the board when we had folks from Lake City that were here. And this has absolutely no contribution to any of those issues. In fact, because of the massive size of the, of the, of the stormwater basins, this actually provides mitigation beyond just our property. So that was one of the most extraordinary evenings that I think Mr. Wood and I had when people showed up and they, they thought somehow we were going to flood them out, and that we have nothing to do with that. So. The proposed uses, and you may recall that as far as the proposed uses, we, we submitted a list of uses that we will not allow on the site. And it ranged, it was, it was something that we had talked about. The proposed use is essentially, it's a bank and office building. It's good, clean use. And the traffic has been analyzed. There was even more recent traffic study that was conducted by John Myers. It works, from our perspective.
Where's the closest?
I'm sorry?
The closest residence, where's the closest house and residence?
The closest residence. John, perhaps you could best answer that.
There is, there's a lot here, which I believe is not built on yet, but the proposed home is, is along here. This lot is actually a flag lot, which the, the home is actually back up in this area. There is the adjacent lot right here, approximately right about here.
And we have a lighting plan on this?
A lighting plan?
I'm sorry?
Is there a lighting plan, was the question?
Well, we, yeah, there is a lighting plan.
Other questions from the board members?
I just want to be clear, we're dealing with it as one lot because this is in a one-site plan, right?
That is correct. This is. Well, oh, forgive me. Forgive me. I forgot. There is presently two lots that have been created and exist.
Right.
And I believe that the proposal calls for those lots to continue. I apologize, I misspoke.
But when the right-of-way is abandoned, where's the lot line going to be?
There would be a lot line.
There'd be, currently, this is, this is the right-of-way here. What we're proposing is to realign this where the, the lot lines are here, and then we'll have an access easement over both parcels to get into the, to the site.
All right. Now, it's going to trigger, there's going to have to be restrictions that the, both lots are going to be bound for ingress, egress over the roadway.
There'll be crossing, crossings.
All kinds of things like that.
This side here will be a, an easement for, for both, for, for egress into the site.
Who's going to maintain that in, in and out of there?
I guess it's going to be a shared entranceway, similar to, I guess, like Ottesburg, where that's a shared entranceway. Who's going to control that? Who's going to maintain that?
Well, the property owners, certainly the town's not going to. And it's fairly common when you have, you know, a commercial zone, obviously you have different property owners, and, and typically what happens is you, you, you know, you're limited access and you have shared access. So that's clearly something that's the responsibility of the property owners.
Michelle, questions? Comments?
I know, I see here, but I apologize because I haven't had a chance to look at the, the new plans as soon as we prepared an alternative site plan. What's the difference? Can you walk us through this?
It just shows the single access. I think also, Michelle, with, actually, the alternate site plan is actually not the current site plan.
The building's.
Yeah, no, but that, I don't think they intended to do that. They just used the old plan. The new, the new, the new plan confused me, but the updated plan has the bank to the east. The alternate plan still shows the bank to the west. But all this plan is?
This is, this is an alternate plan. I know, previously, there were discussions about providing a different alternate plan. Basically, this, this lot remained the same. As you can see here, this is where the, the bank is, was proposed, or, this is, if you're looking on the proposed plan here, it's basically flip-flopped where the bank now is located on this corner, and we're providing access to here. We're not proposing that. That was just at the request of the board. We had shown an alternate plan to what we're proposing. But this plan, previous plan with the bank to the, to the east and the single-story building in the center is what we're proposing.
The, I'm sorry, the letters that Mr. O'Rourke alluded to, were they in the package that came tonight?
Yes.
Okay, Michelle, any other questions?
Well, I, you mentioned the lighting plan earlier, and basically, I had sort of avoided looking at the lighting plan and the lighting plan until we had the, the site layout, you know, set at some points, since we were still discussing how it was going to be. So I had to take a closer look at those. But I'll do that once we're certain that this is going to be the.
Yeah, just so we're not getting splash off of it.
I know they've, back in the zoning timeframe, they, they had put together a SWIP plan. And as Dennis mentioned, it's partly handling stormwater from the subdivision as well as the site. And I know they provided that to us again more recently. But back when that was done, it was under the prior version of the design manual, so they'll have to get some more updates of that stormwater plan. But until the layout was nailed down, they wanted to hold off on doing those additional revisions of their SWIP. But we'll, we'll be getting into those comments when, when they're available. Some of the other comments I know that came up were access for the fire truck full circulation around the one building A, and it looks like they're trying to show that on this plan.
The plan that we're showing, I'm sorry to cut you off, Joe. We are showing, originally, this was a dead end on both ends here. We are showing an access area along here with a retaining wall, just for, for fire access.
Did you look into grade? What kind of grade are you coming up with currently?
Right now, there's, it's about 10, 10%, maybe a little bit more than 10% coming, coming up here. There is a retaining wall along the property here, along, along the retention basin that ranges from zero to eight to nine feet in, in this, this area here. And then tapers off down as you go down.
Some of the other comments were about the, the water system. They're showing onsite wells. The site has dry water lines. There might be an option of tying into the Shenandoah system if, if that can be, capacity can be made available. So we'd like them to clarify which way they're going with their water system. I mean, if they had municipal water, that could also provide sprinkler service to their buildings and, you know, just a more desirable system if it can be made municipal water. But I know there's some, some logistical things where that's concerned. Otherwise, it was just, you know, some clarification on different grading, things that were labeled. A lot, a lot of the other comments were relatively minor.
Good. Brendan?
I wanted to first just spend a, a couple of minutes to sort of, you know, going through the way the traffic is laid out so that the board has an understanding of how it would function. You know, basically, the letters that came from the Duchess County and from the DOT confirmed their original plan from 206, 2006, and the movements and the restriction on the movements. So, you know, what that is, is there's no left turns off of Palin into the site, and there's no left turns out of the, egress turns out onto 52 from the 52 access. What that sort of means internally for the site is that there's going to be, need to be some signage internally to make sure that people are going to the correct exit. So there's going to need to be internal signage that would say, you know, Route 52 eastbound, and give them an arrow to the Palin Road exit. You know, and the same thing if they're going to do, you know, 52 westbound, they're going to need some signage internally to actually get people to the correct exit so that they can make the proper movement and we, and there isn't illegal movements happening. You know, one thing I also want to point out is the Palin Road entrance, you know, it does come out, you can make any exiting maneuver there. It does, there is three lanes there, a right-turn lane, a through lane, and a left-turn lane. So traffic that does come out of there, they have to cross those three lanes to get across. They also have to, if they're going to come and make a left onto 52, they not only have to come out, but they have to cross two lanes to navigate to the left-turn lane and then make a left turn on, on 52 at the signal at Palin Road. So that, so that's how it would function. I think at the 52 entrance, they show some restrictions. They show a splitter island that restricts the movements. They show some pavement markings that I think probably should be signs, not pavement markings. On the Palin Road access point, there's no splitter island show, shown, but there's going to, there's going to need to be one if this is the final configuration so that people, it restricts people from actually making that left turn off of Palin.
Do you gentlemen agree with that? That we're talking?
Yeah.
We're talking no left turn in off of Palin and no left turn out?
Right.
No left turn and out onto 52.
Correct.
Which is what it is presently. Right. It's consistent with what the state had included in 2006.
Okay.
So we are, my office has, we've been trying to contact the DOT just to understand their, their basis. You know, they, they do, they do indicate that they believe that, they didn't cite whether it was safety or operational, why they, they thought it was, you know, not advantageous to have a left turn on 52. And what I wanted to offer was, you know, sort of my selfish traffic opinion of looking at this. I mean, I certainly think a corner site like this with, you know, a major county road and a major state highway, it absolutely makes sense to have access onto both roads. You know, because of some of the issues and the internal circulation I brought up, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced that the restrictions should exist on 52. Now, I know the traffic analysis, and you can correct me if I make any mistakes in what I read in your report. Basically, they looked at the existing traffic and they projected the traffic out five years. They show in, in the, in that, in five years out, that the left turn coming out, if it was a single access on 52, that that would be a failing level of service, but barely failing, right? And like, I think, you know, in the 52nd range. So it's not extreme, you know, an extremely bad F, but it's an F nonetheless. But that's with all the traffic from the site coming to the 52, you know, one entrance onto 52. If there is an access allowed on Palin Road, you would split that traffic, and it would probably, it would, it would offer a better level of service on, you know, on 52 if this driveway was a full movement driveway. The other thing I want to point out, there's, and I think we've talked about this in other applications, I mean, there's a difference between level of service and delay. You know, a level of service F for a signalized intersection and a non-signalized intersection are different. You know, the actual amount of delay is different. So if you were to look at this site and you wanted to take a left turn out onto 52, in the analysis that Rich and John Meyer completed, it shows that it's an F, but it shows that it's a 50 seconds of delay, F. If you want to take, if you want to go 52 eastbound and you have to exit this site the way it's configured, or the way they're proposing it to be configured, you'd have to take a right turn on Palin Road, which has a delay associated with that. And then you'd have to go to the signal at Palin at 52 and take a left turn, and there's a delay associated with that. If you were to look at those delays, they're actually just about equal. They're, they're within a couple of seconds of each other. So there's not really a, a time savings. There's a level of service difference. But what I would argue, if I, you know, if I could choose the access, I mean, obviously, Duchess County, they have their rationale for wanting to limit the, the lefts in because, because of the proximity to the intersection. And people are going to be coming around that corner, and there's no exclusive left-turn lane. So that's, that's the rationale behind prohibiting that. I, I don't actually have a full understanding of what the DOT, you know, what their rationale is for restricting it, because, now, you did provide sightlines for Palin Road.
Yes.
My understanding from the report, there's no sight distance issues on 52.
No.
All right. So there's adequate sight distance on 52. And, you know, I, I think if you were to look at the level of service, you know, like I said, the, the analysis shows all the traffic coming out of 52 for their proposal. If their proposal included access on Palin Road and you split that traffic, you know, there's going to be a lot of that traffic that's going to exit onto Palin, and we've reduced the amount of cars that were coming out onto 52, thus improving that level of service. And I can't tell you what that would be, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure it would be less than the, you know, the, the F that all the traffic currently is.
Ignoring the delays, Brendan, I'm sorry, what about the safety?
Yeah, the, well, I mean, again, there's, you know, left turns are, you know, a more critical movement. So there's, I mean, there's always safety associated with a left turn. But what you look at is things like sight distance, things like level of service, because, I mean, it's driver expectation. If there's enough time for you to make the maneuver and there's adequate sight distance, you know, you know, you know, you can't, I mean, you can't sort of, you know, you know, take all of it. You know, you can't make it, you know, idiot-proof, for lack of a better term. But, you know, I mean, if, if there's adequate sight distance and the level of service is, you know, within reasonable means, you know, then, then it should be safe.
Okay.
Now, we are, we are talking about the peak hours. So, you know, here in the peak hour, you know, we're talking about the PM peak hour. The AM actually works. The PM peak, you know, the, the PM peak is whatever it is, it's an hour or two-hour duration. You know, there's the rest of all this time that this facility is going to be out here. I think in the report, it even indicates that the restrictions that are out there on this road now, you know, there's been observations of people making illegal lefts. And, you know, you always have that opportunity where people are going to look to make an illegal maneuver.
Let's come back to that if I could, Mr. O'Rourke. Excuse me a second. I'm having trouble seeing where you're coming down with this. Do we need the Palin Road exit or not?
I mean, I think, I mean, I think, like I said, talking from a selfish traffic perspective, it, it absolutely makes sense to have access on Palin Road.
Okay.
I mean, from, you know, it's a, I mean, it's a county road that has significant.
And these studies are based on traffic patterns basically today and maybe some percentage increase in the future.
Right. I think 2%.
But if the IBM site is developed in any way, at all, that's going to just make it worse, I would think, if you don't have a Palin Road entrance-exit. So that helps. You want to, you want to minimize the number of cars that are, that are exiting on 52 from that site. And that's based on current traffic studies. But if the traffic increases.
Well, they, they do use a growth, I mean, they do use a growth rate. You know, I think, I mean, I'm familiar with the traffic on 52 and 82. If you look at historical growth rates, actually, I think, you know, even the 10, 15-year growth rates are really about 1.5%. I think they used a conservative estimate of 2% growth per year, and they looked out five years from the development.
Unless, unless there's development on the IBM site, and that's going to change that. It's going to, it's going to increase.
It could.
Brendan, I'm sorry, any other, excuse me a second.
Sure.
Brendan, any other comments?
No, I mean, I think that's the crux of it. I mean, obviously, the. I mean, obviously, the, you know, if this plan goes forward, there's going to need to be the, you know, there's, there's access issues and direction that are going to need to be ironed out.
Okay. Before we go to Scott, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this, and forgive me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but one of the reasons why the Route 52 egress out of the property is restricted to make the right-hand turn was because the planner at that time felt that it was a safety issue so that there should not be a left-hand turn coming out onto 52. So, you know, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. I think the issue is that what is being proposed is something that the regulatory agencies, the traffic engineers, they're the ones that said, quote, "Access works well," end quote. The point of it all is this, there's, there's, I just spent some time down in Midtown Manhattan, there's a lot I think we'd like to do with traffic down there, so, but right now, what we're proposing is this, and we believe that, you know, as best as we can, and the issue on Route 52 has been examined and examined, and we try to be responsive in terms of what is being suggested, but seems to work, so. But anyway, that was my, but the history is that it was this planning board's consultant that recommended that as, because of the Route 52, that it was best just to have the right turn out.
Scott, thank you.
Well, just in furtherance with Brendan was talking, would you have any objection? I mean, Brendan's in agreement with Palin Road, so leaving that aside for a moment. What I understand is that Palin Road actually helps the 52 entrance function better because it reduces the amount of traffic volume. And then if you can alleviate the F, people are less likely to cheat out, which makes it a safer entrance. So would you have any opposition if Brendan were to endeavor with DOT to get that to be a full access connection, provided you still were able to maintain the Palin Road connection?
Personally, I'm an engineer. If you go there, the engineers and professionals go there, common sense tells you it's dangerous to make a left, which is why the previous planner said it's a safety issue. All you have to do is vote.
Right. But at the end of the day, if DOT says, yes, in consideration of Palin Road, we'll let you make the left, you're not opposed to that, are you?
But we just, when we just spent moments before you told us to go back to the DOT, we had 2006 legislation we adopted.
I mean, I think we're, if DOT made that a full access and you still have Palin Road, I don't see how that hurts you in the least.
Well, it doesn't.
Because here's the thing, I think there's still a concern about any circulation and cars coming and not obeying these signs and making illegal lefts anyway.
Scott, and we, believe me, we don't want that. We don't want anybody disobeying any signs. I think the issue is this, and it's, it's a matter of time at this juncture. We were asked, we had a proposal.
I don't think there's any proposals to delay this.
This shouldn't delay.
We're just saying is there might be that conversation.
What about a meeting?
Anybody can talk to anybody else, and engineers, that's fine.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have a full application to we propose site plan and subdivision. I mean, there's full set of plans.
Well, we were waiting.
I understand that, so you're going to have to finalize your plans and then we'll be ready to go.
Um, I don't know what we have, if, by way of a comprehensive submission. I think part of it was that we were waiting for, to get a response from DOT and a county so that, you know.
What hasn't formally declared lead agency yet?
Oh, I know that, yeah.
The notices were just coming in.
You've actually circulated for lead agency.
We did, and then the two letters you got are in response to that circulation.
Correct.
I'll be a little late, and therefore.
I try.
We can only do so much. But, so anyway, if I may, I think, I think there's two things. One is that from a, from a secret perspective, there has been the circulation for lead agency. I think there has been no objection to the planning board acting as lead agency. I would respectfully request that you declare yourself lead agent. And then secondly, obviously, based upon these responses, and believe me, we tried to get these responses even faster than we got them, and they're dated January 23rd and January 24th, we submitted information a long time ago.
In October.
In October.
That's all of the cases.
Right, so we just want to move the application along.
Okay. Can we go back to polling our professionals?
I'm sorry?
Can we go back to polling our professionals?
Absolutely.
Scott, I'm sorry, were you?
Well, the point I was making, as long as we don't hold them up, which I wasn't implying that we would, I didn't see a harm if Brendan can talk to DOT and with what I just heard, you know, looking at it in its totality, Palin Road and 52, if you can get that to be a full access, am I hearing you correctly tonight?
Yeah.
What's the harm in that?
I mean, because I think, you know, and I think the board should be concerned about the internal access. I mean, their responsibility is to the, you know, this site after it's developed and the people that are going to be using the site. And, you know, when you start to make things confusing, or you start to restrict movements, it's, you know, it makes it more difficult internally, and, you know, you're going to have that potential that people make illegal maneuvers, and they're not all the best maneuvers either. Like I said, you do have to cross a few lanes and, you know, and 20, you know, 22 hours of the day, there's not going to be a lot of traffic where these movements are going to be pretty easy to make onto 52. You know, it's, it's, you know, like I said, you know, that's, that's my professional opinion.
With all due respect, I don't think we need the applicant consent to have a dialogue with DOT. I think we should just, you know, let decide who wants to.
I was just going to, as Mel Brooks once said, "It's good to be the king." And so, you know, obviously, we're here, we need to get the approvals, we're not going to restrict any conversations, we just want to respectfully move the application forward. That's.
Got that. Scott, all right, you're, you're good. Tom?
I said my piece.
You've said your piece, okay. Okay, so, all right, I, I think we are at a point where we now finally have a plan.
Well, I think you're at the point you could declare lead agency, except for lead agency tonight, and then once there's the full submission of the revised pages, et cetera, you'd be able to put it into a schedule for public hearing.
And we've already fully circulated, we can declare ourselves lead agents?
Yes, you did that.
Okay. Then I make a motion that we declare ourselves lead agents?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now officially lead agents.
Thank you very much.
Okay. What else? What are, where do we go from here?
The walls and the ground.
Okay.
Just clarifying, this is the plan that we're going with, and we'll finalize this plan with the access as.
I, I guess so. I mean, let's face it, it's.
Just to clarify.
I'll bite my tongue. That said, yeah.
I just have a question.
Yeah, please.
I'd just like to see or know what's going to happen with that access road in there. Is that going to be a finished road when you fellows are done? Or is it just going to be a dirt access that's going to have to be paved and finished?
You're talking about the, this, this access road?
No, 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 the one coming in off of 52 now.
The main road.
That's going to be paved.
The gap between the cul-de-sac and your.
Yes, that's, it's paved now, that's going to be.
Paved with a gate?
Oh, oh, through here, this.
Yeah.
Right now, we're proposing it to be a basically reinforced earth, which it would look like grass, but there is a subbase to it and a system in there, so it would be able to handle wheel access.
Emergency access.
Yes, and there would be, there would be a gate that's there.
And you'd propose the same thing for the emergency access around the building, right? Reinforce the?
Yes, at this, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much, good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, the Sports Stone. The Sports Stone. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening and thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Feinstein. I'm the attorney for Sports Kingdom, the name of the Sports Dome project. I wanted to thank everybody for giving us this opportunity to briefly discuss some of the basic concepts that we have for this particular project. Dan Fraoli is the brains and motivation behind the project, and Dan, unfortunately, with the scheduling, how this worked out, he is down at Disney with his three kids on a family vacation, and by the time we knew we were here tonight, he wasn't able to cancel that. So he apologizes, and certainly going to be here for all the other meetings.
He's ably represented, I'm sure.
Sent me here in his place instead. Steve Trinkus, our chief engineer, who's just going to set up the PDF for you up there of the, of the plan, is here to answer questions as well. Just by way of background, Dan Fraoli is the president of Air Structures American Technologies, Inc. We know it lovingly as ASAD. ASAD is a 55-year-old company started by Dan's father, Dan Senior. They build air-supported structures, and the proposal here is to put these Little League baseball fields, four Little League baseball fields, inside of an air-supported structure. They've been in business over 50 years, they built the Giants bubble, the Jets bubble, the Dolphins bubble, the Miami, the Washington Redskins bubble, air structures for countless universities, they've built bubbles in China, Russia, all over the world, and they've done it successfully for over 50 years. Their technology is the state of the art. It's the patented technology that involves the use of a special kind of cable harness that goes outside the structure, and the beauty of the cable harness, in addition to safety, is it allows for the structures to be sufficient size to house sports facilities, such as football facilities and this baseball facility. Dan had the experience of raising three boys who were all involved in baseball, and Little League baseball, 8 to 12, 8 to 13 years old, and he's a, been a coach, remains a coach of Little League baseball. Through that experience, he had the opportunity to travel all around the country, especially on the East Coast, to see the facilities that exist for housing the, the baseball games and the baseball tournaments. And some of you may be familiar with Cal Ripken's facility in Maryland, there's Baseball Heaven on Long Island, there's a large baseball facility in Rehoboth, Delaware. Dan went to all these. They have tournaments that go for one, two, three, four, five days at a time, perhaps the largest up in Cooperstown, New York. And the one part that was missing was the, the winter facility, the indoor facility. And of course, here in the Northeast, that's something that's desperately needed. So Dan, having lived the life of being at these tournaments and seeing the dearth of fields, especially for folks, kids in the Northeast in the wintertime, married his love and passion for baseball with his occupation of running this, this company that builds the structures, somewhat of a perfect storm, and he hatched this idea to build this kind of facility, and the search was on for the right location, and we think this is a wonderful location. Obviously, its accessibility to the folks in the Northeast off of 84 is perfect, and the town is, is, we think would be a great host for this type of facility. It's a kind of facility that's going to attract attention and notoriety. Folks will be traveling from literally hundreds of miles away to come to the facility, and everything about it, everything about its design, everything about its construction, would be state-of-the-art, the best of the best. Firstly, because Dan and his company know exactly what that is, because they've built them for over 50 years. And secondly, because it involves children, because it involves youngsters, and obviously the need for safety, the need for it to be beautiful, the need for it to last a long time, all that is critically important to Dan. He's personally involved, not only in developing the project, but will be personally involved in running the facility if we're fortunate enough to get, to get one built. And so he apologizes again for not being able to be here tonight, you'll see him for all of the, the other, the other meetings. The, the structure itself is proposed to be 738 by 468 in its dimensions, and would be really 150 feet high, but the proposal is to have it placed on top of a 10-foot concrete wall, so that the actual highest point of it would be 160 feet high. Now, as opposed to a flat-roofed building or an office building, the 160 foot is only in this area at the very top where the peak of the dome is, and then, of course, it, it comes down, so the mean height is, is significantly less. But at its highest point on top of this wall, it would be 160. Now, the reason it's proposed to be on top of a wall is, again, based upon years and years of experience with these structures. In order to connect the air structure to doors to get in and out, including emergency doors, those that are not placed on top of concrete walls connect to the doors through baffles. And these structures are, the outside of the structures are made of PVC-coated vinyl, it's like a very thick fabric, and then inflated with air, kept in place by a cable, cable attached to a concrete foundation. But if it's not put on top of a wall, those baffles are susceptible to being torn, snow and ice, things of that nature, so that there can be a separation between the, the fabric that connects it to these, to these doors, whether revolving doors or emergency doors. They found over many years that the best way to handle that problem is to attach it to the top of a concrete gray beam or wall, and then have the entrances go through that wall, so there's no baffle, there's no fabric connecting to those doors, again, for safety reasons. So inside of the structure is essentially four Little League-sized baseball fields. There's a deck which contains, or is proposed to contain some restaurant space, some retail space, to be used by the patrons that are inside the facility, some viewing decks for mom and dad and sister and brother that are there, some warm-up places, some batting cages, things of that nature. But basically, it's, it's, the bubble is constructed the size that it's proposed to be to house the four baseball fields. In addition, the proposal has outside, five baseball, outside baseball fields, two regular or full-size baseball fields, and three intermediary-sized fields. Now, intermediary-sized fields are smaller than a regular baseball field, so it's smaller than the 90-foot base paths and 60-foot pitching mound, and larger than the fields that are inside of the facility, the Little League fields. And again, that's done for a, for a business reason. The facility, like the facilities in Cooperstown, Cal Ripken's facility in, in Maryland, Baseball Heaven on Long Island, they exist to be able to attract the leagues from all over for these tournaments, whether they are one-day tournaments, weekend tournaments, in the summertime, week-long tournaments. That's where the facility makes its bones. And in order to do that properly, in order to do that and cover the 8 to 12, the 13 to 14, and the 14 and 15, you really need to have all three size fields. So even in the summertime, with the tournaments that are proposed for the facility, the Little League guys will be inside. Now, the facility is fully air-conditioned in the winter and fully heated in the summer, and they're going to be the happy guys because there's never a rain out in the summertime, and the temperature's perfect, and they think they're playing in the Houston Astrodome, so they're happy as can be. The older kids, the 12 to 13s are on the intermediary fields, and the 14 and ups are on the larger fields. I should mention that the use of these intermediary fields is sort of a, bit of a cutting-edge thing that's going on. What the studies have found is that the, the kids, when they're 11 and 12, and they're about to get a little bit too, too large and too big for the, for the Little League fields, are not quite ready for the full-size fields, and it hurts their arms to throw third to first, it hurts their arms to throw from the 60 feet 6 inches off the pitcher's mound, so they're developing these intermediary-sized fields, help keep the kids in the sport and help prevent injuries. So that was the reason for the five outdoor fields and the four indoor fields as, as proposed. Of course, here to answer any of your preliminary questions that you may have, and Steve's here to answer any specific questions regarding the preliminary design and engineering that we have for you.
I have a few questions, but go ahead.
How does this affect our town Little League programs?
Is there like a local use provision?
Because during the summer, I mean, are, is it, are we going to be competing?
No, I don't, I don't think there'll be any competition with your town's Little League programs, unless your town has a special travel team that gets involved in these types of tournaments and leagues, they have a travel team that goes to Cooperstown, or a travel team that goes to, down to the facilities in, in Maryland, it's not meant to replace local-town Little Leagues. This is, these are, these are more of the kids that are involved in the travel-level sports, and that do a lot of, of club teams and, and a lot of showcases and traveling around for that.
And they made a presentation to the Rec Advisory Board some time ago, and the board was unanimous in its support of it, so.
And, does it supplement it at all?
Well, we think it does, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Obviously, wintertime.
Yeah, sure.
Steve, was there, there are these other four multi-purpose fields, or what are these other fields? other fields inside?
You only spoke about the baseball.
Baseball, and then you had to say the other four fields.
Right, well, the, the other four fields are really there just as spill-over fields for kids that aren't involved in the actual, uh, uh, game at the time, because it, they, they run about an hour at a time, the games, so there's some, some space for them to, to, to congregate, to be, to let off some steam, maybe to warm up, things of that nature. It's sports kingdom. Its primary use is proposed to be, and everything is based upon, the financial model, and everything is based upon it being baseball-centric. But it is an indoor facility, it is of astroturf, it does have lights, so there's the options for having other sports there, local soccer, local lacrosse, uh, flag football, things of that nature.
Steve, the, the drawings we saw showed four diamonds, but then they also had soccer fields. I mean, they are, the soccer fields are going to be there on a regular basis, right?
Yes, they're not, there's, there's no, nothing in the plan proposes to use them as soccer fields on a regular basis. It's not proposed in the, in the business model to rent out soccer fields on a regular basis. It's a baseball-centric facility, but since the, the, the shape allows for the use of, of other parts of the interior, there are soccer fields shown. They're small, they're not full-size fields, they're small, mini-fields. Whether they're used in addition to those fields, it's hard to imagine they would be used at the same time as those fields. But if there's downtime when there's no baseball being played, it can be used for soccer parties, it can be used for local soccer organizations that want to run clinics or programs there. Yes, certainly, that level of flexibility is there. And I should say that the four fields that are shown for baseball diamonds are configurable differently. Uh, uh, they can be one full-size baseball field in there, four Little League fields, or two slightly larger fields, depending upon the configuration that's needed. But it's really scheduled to be the four Little League fields.
What about concerts, special events?
Well, it's really not part of the business plan to do that. What we had talked about is, the facility could house special events because of its size, and that would be something that we would suspect and would like the ability to be able to essentially ask for a, a sort of an as-needed special permit use. If we wanted to have a special event there, if there was going to be a special party or a special concert, something of that nature. I know that, uh, folks involved in the project have friends that are Yankees and, that are, that are Mets, and, and they may want to come and do showcases, so there would be special permits that I think would be requested on an as-needed basis for anything like that. That's not part of, of the, of the basic proposal that we have here.
How many people would you see being in there at one time, in terms of, when the site is fully, you know, at its peak?
Well, um, I don't know that I have an exact number of, of people that, that maybe the max occupancy could be. The, 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 the plan would be to have, uh, during peak hours, uh, four Little League fields working at the same time. So you would have two teams of approximately 15 per team, you'd have two teams of 15 on each field, and probably two teams of 15 waiting for their turn to play. And then some parents and siblings and, and that sort of thing. So that's, that's a, a general idea of what, what's expected. And that's during its, you know, full-on tournament use, its peak, its peak-use periods of time.
Access, will access be primarily off of 52, or is there any plan to incorporate, like, uh, perimeter drive from IBM, or?
Well, as you know, the approved, uh, site plan for IBM, the West Complex included, has auditorium drive connecting into the back road, and that, that's, uh, supposed to be open. And obviously, with this project coming forward, we've, uh, spoken with IBM about our concerns about their position of keeping it closed when they sold the West Complex. But that sale by them of the West Complex did not eliminate the requirement to keep it open, so they are, the dialogue is happening to get that open. So the, the access would be through auditorium drive and, uh, the connector road.
And, and parking, uh, IBM would, would be willing to provide space for parking overflow if there were?
No, IBM wouldn't have anything to...
Well, the current owners.
Yeah, they're, they're going to have, they're going to have X, uh, number of spaces on their site, and then they negotiated a, uh, shared parking agreement if you will.
Okay, so there is, so there is availability of other parking?
So it would be available.
About traffic control with on the site itself, who would be handling that?
Well, the, the assumption would be that would be something that would be, we'd have to work at ourselves, yes, that's subject to whatever you, your, your traffic folks want or whatever is needed. On-site traffic would have to be handled by us. The, the, the acreage here would be a separate subdivided lot.
First, you got to know how you're going to get them on and off there before you...
In the business plan you keep on referring to, is that the same business plan that other domes are using? Uh, and, and I guess what I'm, I'm saying is, you keep on saying baseball, but, uh, there are a lot of other different functions that could certainly utilize this. The other domes that, uh, uh, he's involved with?
Right.
Do they have other, uh, functions going on, on a regular basis that weren't part of their business plan?
Well, I can't necessarily speak to other parties' business plans. The other facilities that ASADI is involved in, they're the supplier of the, of the structure, not, uh, uh, the investor or the, or the developer of the site. Um, the, the, I know that there are a handful, including Jack Cust Baseball Dome in New Jersey, which ASADI built about five years ago, and, um, is, um, a bit of the guidepost for Dan and his family in wanting to do this. They worked very closely with Jack Cust, who's a professional baseball player, and his dad, to build that facility for them. They also have indoor, uh, uh, fields and outdoor fields, and I think it's a bit of a model for theirs, and that's exclusively baseball. But they have built hundreds of domes for all sports use that were not baseball-centric. This dome is being designed and built and planned around being a baseball-centric dome. And that's much more like Jack Cust, and much less like the other facilities that they have provided domes for.
You know, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What happens if the business fails? What happens with this dome?
Then you have a big, it's a big...
Yeah, this big dome.
Deflating.
It deflates.
The, the dome is...
You know, are they taking it down and making it go away, or is it just going to stay there?
The, the dome is, um, in some very important ways, a very temporary structure, in the context of your question. For many of their customers, um, one of the things they do is, they're, these, these facilities, for some of them, are only up in the wintertime. Usually, they're the smaller facilities than the very large ones. And so they take them down in the, in the, in the summertime, and then put them back up in the wintertime. And it's not all that complicated to do that. So I don't think there's a situation where you're going to have an air-supported structure there if the business fails. The, the, it's certainly expensive to run the, uh, inflation equipment, uh, and, uh, so to, to keep it up. So, uh, I'm sure, and it has significant resale value, uh, as an air-supported structure that can be placed at another location. So I'm sure the structure itself would not stay inflated indefinitely if it's going to fail.
I, I think I just just want to add, is the process that has to happen, is they've come in tonight just as an informational thing, let you know that. If the town, they filed an application to amend the zoning ordinance to allow a recreation facility in industrial zone, um, so that if the town board at their meeting refers that petition to you, you will then have before you, uh, propose amendment to the town zoning ordinance. So the concern that you have, Jason, about is a very valid one. Maybe some language, if it's not in the proposal, maybe we have to insert that and recommend something back to the board, because this is a, a structure that if, if, God forbid, the business failed, uh, it's, it requires some active maintenance to keep it, uh, structured.
Is it still, is the zone still going to stay industrial?
It's going to stay industrial division.
But there'll be a...
The concept is, is that we would create a special permit that would allow large-scale recreational facilities in high zones. Uh, we have already on the books for the golf center. The town at that time enacted a special permit for outdoor, large-scale outdoor recreational. So we're really working with that as a framework to modify it to allow the enclosed indoor.
And along those lines, yes, I, you know, not to belittle that point, but as Tom said, God forbid that it fails, but in the meantime, you know, applause for putting the site back to work, so, you know, again, welcome. One question, I mean, you see what it's like out there with all the snow. I mean, how would a dome like that deal with this kind of snow coat?
Um, there's been over 50 years of experience dealing with them. The, the, ASADI has built, uh, air-supported structures, um, all over Siberia, uh, along the Alaska Pipeline. So, um, what basically happens is the outside of the fabric is slippery, and it's also warmed from the inside in the wintertime, just enough so that snow does not build up on the outside. It rolls off of the dome, and one of the reasons for the concrete wall is that it then is next to the concrete wall, and there's the ability to remove it around the perimeter, which is certainly part of what we would have to do. It's certainly something you're going to want us to do and require us to do. Uh, and then the snow is regularly removed so that it doesn't build up and lean in on the dome, but it just doesn't, because of its shape, it doesn't, it doesn't stay on the roof. It, it comes off of it.
And does light bleed through the material, or?
Very little. It's an opaque color. It's several walls thick for insulation purposes, so, um, it's a, it's a, a very sort of soft, um, um, almost like a, a light with a, with a opaque shade over it. So there's very little bleed. It's, 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 uh, it's mostly kept inside. It's not that it's not visible, but it's, it's certainly not a bright light, it's a very soft light.
You may have already addressed this, but, uh, how does this, the size of this dome compare to all the other domes that, that they've installed already?
It's one of the larger domes that they've ever done for sports purposes. They've built larger domes for industrial purposes, covering waste sites, covering construction sites.
But a dome is a dome.
A dome is a dome, and this will be one of the very largest domes that they've done.
But not, not of all the ones that they've built.
Correct. Correct.
Is it round?
It's oval. Well, the, the footprint looks rectangular, but to the eye, it looks, it looks oval. You don't see a, a sharp corner, it's more of a rounded corner. But as you see in the footprint, it's a rectangular footprint.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
To the extent, any of you gentlemen, um, feel like taking a ride, go up to Danbury, Connecticut. ASADI put up a, a good-sized sports dome structure, uh, less than a year ago, for some folks in, in Danbury. We can get you the details, the board has some of the details. It's a good look, you can see their craftsmanship, you can see their use, they're using it for soccer, uh, primarily, and some other sports, they have an indoor track there. But, uh, there's a certain similarity, certainly, to what we're doing here, what we're proposing to do here.
And that's a, a percentage of the size of this one?
Yes, it's, it's probably about 60 or 65% of the size of this dome.
Which dome is that?
The Danbury, Connecticut dome.
Danbury's 120,000 square feet.
This is 363.
This is...
Is that what it is, it's 120?
120.
745.
This is 345, and that's 120.
So it's even, it's even more than that?
Milton Dome is 92,000.
But just going back to a comment that was made, if there were going to be a large-scale event, they would have to apply to the town board for a, a public assembly permit, uh, because this building would, would have a certain maximum occupancy, et cetera, for its intended use. And if they wanted to host a concert, something like that, that's something that would be addressed under our public assembly, which is for gatherings of 1,000 people or more. And under that law, you have health department issues for, you know, extra sanitary facilities. You have perhaps busing from auxiliary sites for...
Parking.
But since you raised the question, that's been discussed in terms of...
So a typical baseball tournament would not have 1,000 people?
No. No.
I just, there's a lot of seating, I mean. I don't know, it's 400 seats.
In the center, in the center bay, it would be seating.
Yeah. Is this like two stories in, in the middle here?
The, the deck?
Yeah.
It's actually three.
It's three stories.
Right? Three.
The third, the third level is batting cages. So there's, um, businesses on the first floor, restaurant batting cages on the second level, the third level is open batting cages.
But that, but they still have the other fields in use too, so you have the, the people for that too, but it still would be under 1,000.
Right, and as I say, it's, it's not envisioned that there would be uses of those fields that aren't part of what's going on with the baseball. It's not a, running soccer at the same time you're running baseball or anything like that.
Anything else? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We hope to see you.
Thanks for your time. We hope to be seen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the last item, which is the proposed changes to the zoning code, which is a absolutely titillating item that we waited till the latest possible moment to do. So, do we have a marked-up copy of these things?
The ones they sent us are marked up.
Okay, so you...
We have two of them, right?
Yep. There are, there are two, they look very much alike, but there's a very subtle difference. So if you look in the headings, one says a local law to streamline the subdivision process, and the other is a local law to streamline the planning and zoning process.
Ah, clever.
Because one will be amending the subdivision, and the other will be amending the zoning ordinance.
I was wondering why there was...
There's a couple of changes that are slightly different, there are a couple of little tweaks that got made because there were typos.
Okay, so...
So if you want to start with the one to streamline, well, perhaps generically, I should just say that, uh, since Michelle has been, uh, here as the planner, and, uh, Cam is always working, whenever situations arise that aren't clear in our ordinances, et cetera, there's a list being kept. And this would be our third, uh, local law going through the process to amend or modify various, the zoning subdivision site plan laws, uh, to clean up these, these issues, because a lot of times, especially, Cam is clerk to the zoning board, you know, you see all these people coming in for variances and things, and you know that the ordinance isn't clear or needs to be resolved, so we've been trying to deal with those issues. And then, obviously, in the planist board's point of view, um, many of our laws need a little modernization and updating, not only to keep them in compliance with other laws and regulations, but also just to, uh, kind of reflect the current practice that's going on around us, I think that's it. So if you look at the subdivision law, it says subdivision process, I'll just quickly run through this if you want.
Sure. Is that, let me just poll the pleasure of the board. Do you guys, have you had a chance to read these things? Do you want to walk through them, or do you want to just kind of go down the thing of comments? Your choice. Tom, why don't you do this and tell them? And I'll give you, I'll give you stage prompts.
I'll be very quick.
I think most of the board is already sleeping through it anyway, so we can go for it.
If we start out with the subdivision of land, what was lacking in our ordinance was a clear definition of a bridge. And so this, this codifies a definition of bridge, because as you know, from time to time, we get projects now where they're proposing structures, crossing bodies of water, et cetera, better known as a bridge. So this will give us the ability, where it's put into the code, to kind of regulate these things a little bit.
I recall a site near 216 and 52 that prompted this. Okay, got it.
Then, in keeping with our, our hope of making our process more business-friendly in the community, uh, what we're proposing is, right now, the subdivision law has one process for everything you want to do, whether you're two lots, 10 lots, or 250 lots. So that, uh, what we're proposing to add in is a definition of major subdivision versus minor subdivision. And what the difference is, is basically the major subdivision is what we have now in that process, which is a full process with map requirements, plan requirements. The minor subdivisions, which would be, uh, more than five lots, not more than five lots, but on 10 acres or less, then the board, this board, can modify what's needed in that submission from the regulations and plans. And it also encourages them to come right in for preliminary final approval in one shot. It also allows for, when we talk about two-lot subdivisions...
Yeah, we said that's in the, that's one of the little tweaks that's missing out here.
That's not, is, but it would also be for a two-lot subdivision that you can virtually approve it, you know, in, in a very quick, short process.
And I think the thing that we said with the two-lot subdivision, and this is something, obviously, you guys need to, to, um, decide if this is something you want to refer back to the town board as one of your recommendations, is, um, whether or not a public hearing would be required for a two, a subdivision of two lots or less. Or if you just allowed the planning board to weigh the requirements that they saw fit once they saw the application come in. once they saw the application come in. You could do it that way as well. And, and so you could just blatantly say that anything two lots or less would not require a public hearing, or you could say that, that, that once we did a pre-application conference, we decided whether or not it's a minor or a major, and whether or not certain requirements would need to be met.
Okay.
And then it, it puts into the ordinance a sketch plan process where they can, and it defines what should be included in a sketch plan that comes before you for discussion. Minor subdivision is here. Major subdivisions, it goes through and cleans up some of the current language in our ordinance.
I thought this was great. One thing I wanted to do, though, is, is can we make it so that they have the option of submitting soft copy if they want to? I mean, we, we a lot of times request it, but, you know, all these piles of paper, why don't we give it to the submitter to say, you know what, I'll give you a bunch of CDs instead, and that's all I'm giving you?
We can ask Pam how many hard copies we absolutely need, and we could make that a minimum. And then we could say, you know, you have, you need to submit at least whatever it is, ten hard copies, and then the remaining copies...
There are, believe it or not, Michael, the New York state law says that the Commissioner of Education, every, from time to time, establishes a record retention list, and it divides in that certain documents that you still have to have a requisite number of paper copies, hard copies.
Oh, yeah. Well aware of...
So that we can look at that and perhaps make that our minimum, and then everyone else can get it electronically.
I just, I just want to make it so that we're not the driver of that, that the people have the option to do it.
Okay. So then, and then the major subdivision, minor subdivision. We also talked about in here dead-end streets, okay? And we put some language in here. The, the language we had in the ordinance now with respect to cul-de-sacs or dead-end streets was, it's a number, it's times the number of lots, times the front, or some crazy formula. So this puts in that they want to see generally a length of about one thousand feet. It defines how you measure it. That's always been, believe it or not, a lot of our things in the ordinance doesn't have an exact measurement. It does allow flexibility if a highway superintendent, town engineer agree to certain modifications of it. If it's a no-outlet road, that there's no way out, then it does require, if it's more than a thousand feet, that it would have to have an emergency access capability. The rest of it is just, so that's the subdivision part in a nutshell.
But just, you know, anything that's double underlined is new tax.
Right. We, we got that part.
Summarized like a man after my own heart.
Major and minor, is that consistent with other ones in this?
Yes.
I don't like you anymore.
Okay, the next one.
Wait, wait, we got a question.
An H.
I'm sorry. Under H, subdivision H.
And the roads?
Okay, this is limiting that you can't have a cul-de-sac or a cul-de-sac. So, because if you have two cul-de-sacs, the first cul-de-sac road doesn't have secondary access, so then you would be taking people from one cul-de-sac road, putting your mind to another cul-de-sac road, and they're all coming out at one point. So what this says, if you're going to have a cul-de-sac, it has to connect to a public road that has two connections to a main thoroughfare.
It's a little bit of a controversy. If you have any suggestions for, if you have any, let me know.
I'm gonna see a diagram for it.
So, okay, so then if we go to zoning, just quickly, is, these would be adding some definitions and things to it. First of all, we're going to formalize from time to time, you've seen over the last year or so, you'll get a request from the town building department about a question, does this constitute a change in the site plan, et cetera? So that's, we're going to call that a building department referral and put it into the code. A pre-application conference is with the planning board to review and discuss that. So in other words, instead of coming in with a plan, they would just be able to come for a brief discussion to talk about, I own this piece of property, this is my general idea, what do you think of it? A shed, this is very controversial stuff. In New York, under the state building code, if you're a hundred and forty-four square feet or less, you don't need a building. So this would continue to allow you to have one of those sheds on your property. We have people who have stretched that, and they, they put up ten sheds under the limit, and then it becomes, you know, an issue. And a temporary agricultural structure.
It's some of these we just didn't have, have definition for. This was, we're just saying that they basically can exist, these temporary agricultural structures, fabric-covered structures for agricultural purposes. And then detached garage, we just didn't have a definition for, believe it or not, even though we use it regularly in the code.
Because, you know, oftentimes, we're having people come in to build what they, what they want you to consider as a detached garage, but it doesn't have a garage door, it doesn't have a certain kind of floor, so this kind of defines what it has to be. Okay? We're including the bridge definition in the zoning ordinance also. Temporary structure is now defined as to what it is, be removed within a six-month time period. Major subdivision, these are just adding those. This seems redundant, but it's adding it to the zoning ordinance. This also says that the front of the house should face the road, face the street that it's on. We have certain situations where houses haven't been situated that way. And we have... Now, the other regulation we're, we're proposing is, you know, some of these conditions that are coming at you from DEC, et cetera, with respect to a subdivision, you know, you say we're approving, the planning board's approving the subdivision incorporating all of these things from DEC, but it really, some of them are creating a burden on the future of the town to regulate them and enforce them. So that this would require that if there is such a restriction coming, that it would be referred to the town board and allow them to agree that they're going to, you know, bind the town in the future to monitor it and enforce it.
I have, I have a comment. You're talking about the paragraph for 194, 14-3?
Yes.
I like the wording, but are there other agencies that can approve something directly to an owner, property owner, without having to go through the town because of the location of that property?
Well, that would only be if they're applying for like a single house and it's in a wetland or something like that, or already approved.
Not even, not even something that's environmentally an issue, something that maybe because of another agency outside of East Fishkill has some jurisdictions within East Fishkill. My, my point is, to make it simple...
You want to broaden this.
I'd like to broaden it to say any agency that comes in...
I can't think of any off the top of my head, because like the Department of Health, if they do something special, they're required to follow up.
How about, how about New York State DOT or County DOT?
DOT usually has the permit, the road opening permit. I don't know, but let's give it some thought.
I think it's a good, a good idea to have something like that.
Because, and this comes up because the DEC is now, when you're approving houses or subdivision near certain wetlands, which are habitats for turtles and other such animals, they're requiring some houses not to have basements, so that there's no basement windows. If they do have basements, they have to have a window well with a cover over it, I guess. And that becomes a burden on our building department, because then we have to make sure, you know, it's another detail, so that things like that would be what we're talking about.
That's the one by Daddio's.
Now, this is one for discussion, dormant applications. What happens many times, as we all know, all of a sudden, after five years, John Smith's here saying, oh, hi, I got my DEIS ready. And, you know, half of us don't know what the project was, you don't remember it or whatever. So this is a provision that would say, if your application is dormant, that means for two years, you do not come in before this board. And you don't even come in and say, you know, we're still working on it, we need more time. If you do nothing, after two years, your application's deemed abandoned, and if you want to proceed, you have to refile an application and start the process. And that, for several reasons, is number one, it keeps all the data fresh. Number two, it brings these applications in compliance with whatever laws have changed rules, and it, you know, prevents us from riding out, I mean, right now, there are several projects that we're riding out the economy for them, the owner, the developer, not people who live here, the developers. And then all of a sudden, one day, they'll come back and they'll expect us to go through all kinds of gyrations to link back to materials they submitted to you ten years ago.
To do things that we've decided are a bad idea in the meantime, so...
Exactly. Well, so we, so this at least...
Yeah, no, here, here, on that one.
Put a little throttle on that.
This is, this links to the, the application, to this next one. We asked in the application, the new application form, that the applicants refer to documents such as the East Fishkill's significant habitats and discuss the applicability to the comprehensive plan and the, and those specific public policy documents the town has in place, because a lot of times, people weren't referring back to those documents, and they were in direct conflict with some of the developments.
Now, and then the next thing, which is a problem you don't face too often, but zoning board does, and may, may, is, you know, you can have one commercial vehicle on a, on a residential district. This kind of defines what the resident, what the commercial districts are, and it also further says that certain types of commercial vehicles in Noah Bank can be parked in a residential property. But it does allow the ZBA to have authority to grant the right for people who live in the residence and have certain types of businesses to have their vehicle there, so it balances out that. It also defines a recreation vehicle and limits the number that can be stored on the property and the location of it.
And says it's got to meet the setbacks, which is key.
Yeah, it has to meet the disattnessure to be in the rear yard, you know, and if, if they can't, because of terrain issues or whatever, put in their rear yard, they can go to the ZBA, and the ZBA would then work with them to come up with something which has the appropriate screening. Because oftentimes, code enforcement, we get complaints that, you know, my neighbor has a boat, parks in his front yard all winter, and I sit in my car, you know, things like that. Okay. The next thing is to clear up a crazy thing that's existed in the ordinance. Right now, you can have a daycare center in a residential district by special permit. So on any one of our streets, somebody could come in and convert their home into a commercial daycare center. I'm not talking, you know, a resident who takes in five children, who supervises them and everything, they're regulated separately. But all this does is to say that the special permit can be in a residential zone, but it opens the door that it can be in all our other commercial districts. Like B1 is silent about nursery schools. It's been interpreted by the, by the zoning board that it's a customary community service, I think, whatever. But this would straighten that out, still have it as a daycare center. Then, okay, the next one is with respect to, you know, the thousand-foot separation between gas stations. This would modify it to say if the distance, if you're separated by the Teconic or Interstate eighty-four, then the measurement doesn't, you know, it stops on one side or the other. And this is because, you know, there are, with the intersection particularly of eighty-four, there might be people who would be, you know, wanting to build gasoline stations or something in a thousand-foot rule. And that kind of came up when we were revising the, that rule before, and just never got into it. Next is about the finish side of the fence should face the adjoining property, believe it or not. It's not in the code, and it's, it's, it's...
Really?
It gives us all kinds of problems.
I could've sworn it was.
And we do have situations that this created spite fences, and we're always drawn into these things. With the sheds, as I said before, you're allowed the one up to a hundred and forty-four square feet. This says you're only allowed one of them, and it defines what it's normally in, because we find that many people are putting up sheds for really business purposes. It's all sheds, the setback's the same thing. And then if a shed is more than a hundred and forty-four square feet, they need to obtain a building permit for it, and it has to meet all the setback and other bulk regulations for the residential line. Detached garages, and this is, as Michelle said before, just cleaning up. We didn't have a definition, and we didn't clearly set forth what we've otherwise intended. Now, the other thing we're adding, this is completely new, is, as you know, many of the residents in the town, they have other structures when they build their houses, like pool houses, cool things in the backyard. We have no provision for that, you know, so...
How is that not a shed?
Well, is it or isn't it? So what we thought was, we're allowing one additional detached accessory structure on your property, meeting these, these limits, and it would be for a pool, a cabana, or a playhouse, or workshop, and putting a definition in, because right now, you know, when is a shed, not a shed? Well, that would define what sheds are, but we also felt we should at least allow what's happening readily all over towns. And that's in a quick nutshell, that's all.
Well done. Thank you. I just had a question. Michelle, you're, the whole thing about codifying with the Hudson Greenway and all that, was that codified someplace else? Did, I, I can't remember whether that made it into the...
No, we talked about it before, and then this would implement it. And all this will be is when they file an application, they're going to have to say that we have reviewed the various studies, which Michelle is charged now with making the list, like the Sania Habitat Study, things like that.
And I'm sorry, the Hudsonia, is that...
That's in the application now.
That's already in there.
It's in the application. Okay, thank you.
The reason we did it that way is because we figured that they'll be updated from time to time, so we can update the list in the application, and then we just refer to that list.
But now the law's, you know, statewide, so you'll know that they've looked at the historic building study.
Comprehensive plan.
And they'll check off that they've compared it and what impact it has on that application.
And they're also required to include a project narrative now, which describes what they're supposed to be.
I remember those points, I just didn't see them. Okay, thank you.
So how does this, like, how does this impact existing conditions like the pool houses?
Well, any, anyone that's there now that's legal can state it. I mean, it's granted.
Well, that's legal. You said there's nothing...
Well, I know, but...
We have nothing already, so...
That's true, we haven't, but believe it or not, you go back, you go through the files, people have C-1s involved. So if they have a C of L, which means it's legal, that's a, that stays, it's like any other thing. But now going forward, at least people will be able to modify those buildings or whatever pieces.
Okay, any other comments, points?
Do you want to make comments to the town board on this, or do you just want to say?
I think everybody was nodding their heads all along. I mean, I don't think there's anybody that wants any further changes.
The town board's public hearing is next Thursday, Wednesday.
I think the house facing...
Yes, I will take a little change in.
I think the house facing the front, you know, facing the road...
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense, but if a guy's got twenty-five acres, and he's got a road going up to the middle of it, and he wants his house to face the sun in front of his house...
Well, you go to the sun, please. I mean, you can't take all of the...
Answered my question.
Well, like, if somebody wants to build a bigger garage, you know, garage in this...
They can still go to the sun.
They can still go to the sun.
Because remember, the garage, detached garage is limited to...
Seven hundred and fifty-four feet.
Or two-thirds. Or, or two-thirds the size, I never remember what we did the last time.
Okay, do I have a motion? Well, first one.
Is that it? Any more comments?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. He's adjourned, thank you.